There we go.
I will start by the moving announcement. In accordance with Master of Law Chapter 48, Section 11, prepared by Jeremnath for Bolton's owning board appeals, we'll hold a public hearing on Monday, December 4th, 2017 at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room at Town Hall, 662 Main Street. Bolton asked to hear an act upon the application of Country Covered, owned by Jane Hood and located at 475-476 Main Street. That can seek a variance from proposed 16-by-20-foot storage addition at the rear of the Country Covered pre-existing non-conforming structure located in Bolton's business owning district at 475 Main Street, identified on Assessors Map 4.0 as possible 61. That can seek a variance for front yard setback for some intersection, 250-13B of the town, fully town of Bolton. Welcome and come present.
Hi, I'm Michelle Tuck from Tuck and Tuck Architects. 29 Old Shore.
And I'm Jane Hood from the Land and City Company.
And yes, we are here tonight to request a front yard setback for an addition we want to put on the back. So you know our existing building, the Country Covered. The entire building is within the 150-foot front yard setback. So any work on the outside of the footprint will require this anyway. And a couple of years ago, they had a shed in the back. So here's Main Street. There's a shed in the back, you can't see it from the street. And that shed had to be removed for an electrical upgrade that has been required for all of the components that they're doing here. They upgraded the septic system already. That's failed every five years. So to write this out. And then the building that you've heard of, the new building that you've heard of next door, that's not why we're here tonight, but that's one of the things.
All right.
This is Tim Hood.
How are you?
You just, there's a sec. So that electrical upgrade caused them to have to remove the shed that they already had. So it was a little bit smaller than what we're proposing. We're certainly not putting the new shed in the same spot because it was in the wrong spot.
You're adding any more square footage than was already there?
Generally, we're adding a little bit more. The new shed will be a little bit bigger. It will sit within the niche of the existing building instead of sitting here. And it'll be a little bit bigger. It's located so that it misses a whole bunch of electrical condensers that are sitting there already. And that shed will provide dry storage for Country Covered, which is what the previous shed as well.
As my memory, as I remember it originally, it was a fruit stand, which I think this gentleman added on to. Do you remember whether you went the 100% at that time?
I don't believe so.
Lock coverage? Is that what you're asking about?
No. Under, this was a pre-existing non-conforming building and additions to pre-existing non-conforming buildings typically under ZBA rulings can be no more than 100% of the original footprint.
I think if you just, if you look at this, this is really old building stuff. And this is what the new building was. So the square footage of this is less than what that one was.
It was upstairs where there wasn't before, so.
There's a partial upstairs, yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I'm just asking.
To be honest, I don't remember how much it was, but I don't, I don't believe. I don't believe we went 100%. I don't remember to be honest. It's over 30 years ago.
So you're saying, Brad, this was one already of?
This is the original building and Jack added that.
Yeah. Optically, it looks like it's three times the size. But again, it's not.
Well, the other, the other building is also deeper too than.
By far, and it has a second floor, although I don't know when that was added. But this building surprisingly has a second floor. It's only a partial second floor. That's where their offices are.
Oh, okay. So it's under that sign area. Yeah, okay. So this is the, this is the rear.
So that is the rear. This is where the shed used to be. You can see why it was removed. And then, and then there's a covered doorway and a couple of mechanical units. And so the new addition will be sitting on there. Kind of in that niche.
So you're suggesting or indicating that the total of the previous indication of improvement and the current improvement can't be more than 100% of the original footprint? And that would be by law, is it the footprint or is it square footage?
It's the square footage. Thanks for that.
And you're only adding one square footage, not much.
60 by 40. And we are far below our lock coverage percent.
Yeah. This is, this is a ZBA thing.
And for the last 15 years, we've had a storage unit up there that is 10 by 20.
Right, so we were close.
So it's a 120-square-foot addition.
That's the floor area, 100% of the floor area.
100% floor, fine.
So, um, so we're here tonight for that request, although I thought I'd run you through the other work that would be done in conjunction with this work, which is a facade redesign, where we would add some gable dormers and a shed dormer to dress up the Country Covered portion and take, you know, get rid of that long roof by adding these pieces in. And then doing, and doing a new siding around the whole, the whole building. Trims around the windows, mottens in the windows. Bring it back towards that Bolton aesthetic. And then a covered front porch, which they don't have now. So that there won't be so much snow coming from those doors and a new compliant handicap ramp instead of stairs to reach that area. The existing ramp isn't, isn't too non-compliant, but it is, is out of compliance. So we will, we're going to pull all of that up and add to it.
Are these blind in the attic or are they?
They are, these guys are false-framed over, so you don't see them from the inside. But that one.
So these are just added on to make the roof line appear.
Yeah. And then this one will actually be a true shed dormer so that you will get that light on the inside. In part because these two windows were going to create kind of a shadow box behind it. So they can still have their open sign and their other signs, but you won't see the stacks of cigarettes and whatever else that's actually behind them now. So we wanted to bring that light back in again since we're kind of taking it away. All the locations stay the same. The, the door location was still the same, but we're just kind of dressing things up and putting a, putting an overhang over the door. So there's a little protection from the rain as well. So that will happen. This, this work is not.
So there are only two sets of doors now?
No.
Oh, that's just door.
They all look alike.
They all look alike, they do, they do. Yeah, you're still going in and out the same way. And then the parking would all stay the same. The, the front porch work here is just in the existing footprint. It is not larger than that. And.
Are these just existing office space and then you said?
No. So it's, it's to the, it's to the store. It's to bring natural light into the store. Some high natural.
It's Cathedral of Sailing in there.
Yeah, you might forget that. The first 10 feet are Cathedral in there.
All right, that's right, and then it goes.
Yeah. Yeah, and it'll get, the space will get completely renovated. New flooring and new racks to merchandise. So this is one smaller piece in a bigger renovation project.
After 30 years, it's something.
Did I hear somewhere that the new plans are going to have bathrooms inside?
Oh, kind of. The, there are bathrooms. The answer is yes, but it's a little bit different. There are bathrooms inside, but they weren't able to have them open to the public because the septic system. And if you have been in there in the last however many months, you'll see that there is a bathroom open to the public again. Just wonderful. So that. Oh, the, the bathroom is sitting right here.
Right past the ice chest.
It's about there. Toilet and the sink. So you can go back even, you don't need a bathroom. So that's already happened. And then there'll be some renovations for Dunkin' Donuts that will start up pretty soon as well. For the inside.
So with regard to the variance that you sort of documented in the application, but just for the public record, can you just speak to the conditions? So there's four conditions as far as, you know, substantial derogation bylaws, hardship, things like that. Just so we can make a part of the public and for the people that may be.
Yes. So I, I might not do this as eloquently as I could. This existing non-conforming building is unique in that the entire building is within 150-foot setback. So any addition, even one that's in the back and not visible from the street or, or most neighbors would be required to come here for that variance.
So that one addresses the first condition for a variance that there's circumstances existing related to the sort of conditions shaped topography of a land of structures that uniquely affect that land of structures, but is not generally affected by the zoning dising which other properties. And the second condition is rule enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw that involve substantial hardship and/or otherwise.
Yes. So a shed addition out in our, you know, out within the front yard setback or outside of front yard setback would not be as usable as one directly attached to Bolton.
And because of the traffic flow where we had it for 15 years, it was kind of in the way. This is actually taking it out of the way of the traffic flow for people. So it's helping a lot.
Well, it's not making the building any more non-conforming. So this is, this is the key thing. If you were adding on to the front, then we might have an issue if you're pushing up more across the street. And the third item would be that desire to leave may be granted without substantial derogation into the public good. Part of what you just spoke about is the safety. It's the raised walkways and the improved safety for the traffic force. And then the fourth one is that desire to leave may be granted without nullifying or substantial derogating from the intent of the bylaws.
Yeah, I think that's, that would, given that this is not work on the front and the bylaws on your setback, I think that's safe to say that we were not diminishing that bylaw.
Question in the back.
Hi, Martha Remington. I'm not in a butter, but I am close to the Country Covered. And I would like to first say that over the decades, I've considered a Hood family, good neighbors, and they have supported things like the bollards in front of Pan Cemetery. I just wanted a couple of things to be documented. Back when the selectmen controlled the pre-existing non-conforming bylaw, the addition of the second floor actually increased over 100% what had been there when Thelma Smith and her husband had had their garden stand. It's just a note. I am not against this addition of the storage per se. I'm a little concerned, are the heat pumps still going to be visible there or will they be within that storage area?
The condensers, they're, when you, when you look at that area now, there are a lot of condensers towards the left if you're looking towards the street. And there are, there was a storage cabinet, kind of like a big tool cabinet, and one condenser that wasn't being used. So the storage cabinet and the condenser that wasn't being used are being removed. And the size of the shed was sized to avoid touching any of the condensers that are inserted.
So they'll be the same.
They won't be touched.
They'll still be visible.
Yes. Well, they'll be, you won't see them as much because of this, the addition.
I am not against the addition of this shed per se, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of historical facts about that. One of which was it did increase over the 100% that was allowed pre-existing non-conforming years ago. But they still operated and they're still good neighbors and they still have a viable business there. Will there still be room for two lanes of traffic? But I noticed that there are some yellow bollards now around the refuse bin. Will that still allow, is it going to be one-way traffic in back there or two-way?
There's 16 feet between the nearest obstruction in the corner of the shed.
So that will allow, you'll still have two-way traffic there?
Especially where that mini storage was, the 20 by 10.
That made it smaller.
That made it smaller. So by moving the shed to the side and fitting it in that corner, it really allows for a little bit more space.
We've increased the space.
Okay. My other concern was, well, if they wanted more storage, they could always evict quality cleaners, which we all love because it's a good business to have in town. You know, to put it in there without putting this in. But I do realize that the existing storage that was back there was eliminated because it deteriorated, I guess.
No, and they needed to remove it for the electrical work that had happened.
Oh, that, okay, so.
And that existing storage was on grade or on, on first, or almost on first floor of the Country Covered, which would be different than quality cleaners.
Okay.
Martha, are these pictures here?
Yeah, I haven't seen these pictures. Erica did give me a footprint.
Well, there's some pictures here if you want it, just.
Yeah. Well, I thought, I'm not so concerned about the aesthetics, but I have a couple of other issues. One of which I had mentioned to Erica. I think now that you're going to have Dunkin' Donuts there, you definitely need to have two refuse cans out in front because you never added one after Subway was added. And if there's only someone at the register and that bin is full, they cannot change that. The other issue I have is when your landscape people come, I pick up a lot of litter in front of your business when I pick up litter in front of the Pan Cemetery. And I never notice marks or whomever your landscape people are picking up business. There are a lot of people who, after you've closed, pull into that area and you see all kinds of nip bottles and things. I mean, the police can't be everywhere, every time. So I, I kind of wish there was more policing of the litter there.
Well, they'll have two companies to police it because Dunkin' Donuts will police it also.
Oh, good.
It's part of the deal.
Yeah, because, you know, the thing is, litter is what is generated from retail business. And we like the retail business, but the litter, people are just so inconsiderate. And I think there was one other thing. I don't know if I can remember it now. Anyway, I'm glad you're doing this. I think it's good that you have Dunkin' Donuts there. I just wanted to point out, oh, one other thing. And I've been talking with Erica about this. Since you put in, way up in the back toward the woods, after you built the two-level parking lot, there is water that I spoke to Carol Gumbert about years ago, who was our former commissioner for Conservation Commission. And it comes running down the access to your second-story parking lot. And it runs out the east side entrance to your business, runs down 117, and it pools just before the gas station.
Does it still happen? Because we put a catch basin.
It is still happening. And have you uncovered that catch basin since? Yeah, because the Lozaro people covered that.
They uncovered.
But it's happened for years. And there was, there was actually an accident where a pickup truck on a cold fall day that was kind of freaked, that froze over and they actually took out everything on the island at 85 and 117 because they slid across that. It, it stops just before the gas station because that's the low point. I had spoken with Carol about this. I haven't mentioned it, mentioned it much to Rebecca, but I did mention it to Erica. And you don't really realize it unless you walk along and you see there's this frozen area. And that really has to be somehow mitigated.
I'll watch that, Martha. I will, because I don't know exactly when it happens. I mean, it happens, that's not when it rains.
Like when it rains. And there's, there's always a puddle there. And if it was just somehow guided into the intermittent stream under the road, you know, to go down toward the brook. And it's lingered, it's been over 15, probably almost 20 years since that's happened. And most people aren't walking along there. I mean, close neighbors walk up to your business, so.
That's a good thing.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
It's renovation, maybe a little outside. Over there, but we have to, that's good. So any other questions, question in the board? I don't think I got many at the moment. It's, the, the original shed was what, 10 by 20? This will be 16 by 20.
I think, I think the improvements are going to make a big difference.
To the point of improvements, we do have a letter here from dated November 8th, from Linda Day, Town Secretary. Well, it's from Erica for the Planning Board to Linda Day, Town Secretary of the Board of Selectmen. And site plan approval for Country Covered 476 Main Street. And she's directed a whole host of site plan documents. And it summarizes the board of, the Planning Board provides the following comments. The board recommends all proposed lighting pictures adorned on Country Covered building in accordance with Section 250-20 PG. For design review criteria, the code of proposed signage on Country Covered building shall be reviewed and approved by the Board of Selectmen. And then it ultimately says, the board favors proposed renovations as it will improve the exterior facade of Country Covered building and will significantly enhance the business district east of Route 495. The board recommends approval of the site plan. So it's just, I'll favor input on the adaptation process. No other questions? Any motion to close the hearing? If there's no other issues, it's why I make a motion to close the hearing.
A second.
On favor of the motion to close the, the motion? Aye?
Aye.
So it's pretty well documented. I think we spoke to the issues or the hurdles of the variance. We've had the feedback from, not necessarily Butter, but North and Neighbor. We have the Planning Board input. So I make a motion to approve the variance request in substantial conformity of plans that are submitted with the application.
I would like to, just as a formality, make it contingent upon verification that the total of the new addition and the previous addition may exceed 100% of the original floor plan. Just so we're confirming. I mean, the plans themselves don't have square footage figures for the previous addition, so.
So is that a condition or is that just a, what? Just a formal condition in the, in the motion or is it just something you want to have a check?
Yeah, I guess it's formal. I mean, I want to make sure we're not violating the requirements.
You said it's footprint.
You said it was footprint, right? I don't know how we do that. Well, I can't tell because there's no square footage figures.
That was, the structure went up 30-plus years ago and I don't know what was there before.
I'm sure they can have it measured. I guess you could do that, yeah. I mean, you just could measure the original building to the left, including all the square footage. And then it would be easy to measure the other one, just.
It's through the math.
Through the math.
When was the original shed installed? Does anyone know?
Oh, the original shed?
Because that's really what you're replacing. You're just replacing what?
It was there when 495 went through, for sure.
No, 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 the shed, not the building, the shed.
Well, but Thelma and, and her husband, that shed was there in the original Farmer's Market building, the one-story building.
They're talking about the.
The portable shed that we had back there. We just had a portable 10 by 20 shed back there for 15 years.
I guess my other question too, does that apply if we're talking about just an accessory structure like that? I don't have the answer to that. I'm just thinking in my head.
Does what apply?
What's that?
Does what apply?
Because that's really truly kind of an accessory structure.
The, the previous shed.
This is, this is just an accessory shed as well, right?
Well, no, we're proposing an addition here. We could, however, we had talked originally about making this a shed, so it's an accessory structure, but still.
A freestanding shed.
A freestanding shed sitting right next to the building. We talked about it originally and decided that for construction purposes, it's better to attach it than you've got the water and the snow running the way they should be. But that's a good comment. If it's an accessory structure, if it's a freestanding accessory structure, then I don't know how that applies to that 100% because it's an accessory structure. So it sounds like we may have, we've got the, the two calculations to run first and see where that number comes in. And then if the old shed, the 120-square-foot old shed is, was 15 years old? Oh, it was, so it was after the addition, long after the addition, so it wasn't part of that. And it was a freestanding accessory structure.
So if we have to make this an accessory structure, we can, but it will just be more traffic outside with us going outside. It's more of a safety.
Plus it's going to look a whole lot better if it's hardly.
Well, it's going to work better because it won't be causing issues.
I guess that's sort of a side note. We'll look into the 100% first and then if for some reason there's an issue there, then we can kind of go down that avenue and see if that's a possibility. But for now.
Yeah, eyeballing it, I don't think there's an issue, but.
Yeah, we're very well clicking no issue, yeah. Well, and frankly, I mean, we didn't even measure the second floor in the old building.
We're only talking about floor area.
You don't have to, it's only.
Oh, it's not, it's square footage. It's footprint. Oh, okay, oh. What square footage?
But when the second, wait, excuse me. When the second story was added, that pushed the usage of square footage over 100% expansion. But it was done and it was commented on and they didn't make them tear it down or anything. But I think it should be, in all fairness, because it's pre-existing non-conforming. And I mentioned this because of the gas station. I don't want that to turn into a three-story building for some other use there if the gas station isn't there. It's just to keep track because selectmen used to be the pre-existing non-conforming people. It wasn't really handled by. It wasn't really handled by Zoning Board of Appeals, just to document it. And there are no hard feelings. I still love this business next to my home.
We still have a height restriction on it.
Yes, but I just wanted to mention that, because I've been there so long and you may not be familiar with it, that it was, they did get a slap on the hand because it was expanded over 100%. So the original, when Thelma and Hardy sold it to them.
But that sounds like you're talking about total square footage.
Yeah, though whatever, whatever it means for preexisting nonconforming, expanded over 100%. And I think it was because of the second floor and the businesses above. But they didn't make them tear it down, they just intentioned.
The issue we ran into wasn't the square footage. The issue was the height of the building, and that's why the front area has that three steps up in the walkway. It had to be done that way in order to bring the average square footage down to meet the height.
Yeah, well, the thing is, you have first floor square footage, you have second floor square footage. If you have a frozen, you have third floor square footage. It's all square footage, so.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, when it was permitted, it wasn't an issue on the square footage of the building. It was after we started construction on it that the issue came up about the average height of the building, because initially, it wasn't going to be that patio area and the steps going up, it was just going to be entrance steps into the building. Frank Christof, who was the building inspector at the time, determined that we were a foot and a half too tall on the average.
So you remember, you remember this whole history as well. Whatever it was, it was over some limit, but they didn't make them tear it down.
The building was a foot and a half too tall, so what we did is we brought the front yard up, a foot and a half in elevation, so that it met the.
Right.
So the requirement is footprint and non-habitable square footage?
I think we should read this in its entirety, because I think there's, there's two cases here that we can look at. So the Board of Appeals, if the Board of Appeals finds that such extension or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structures or use, generally, an increase of not over 100% from the original floor area of the building at the time of the adoption of the zoning bylaw on April 13th, 1972, or not over 50% of the ground area in use at that time shall be considered as not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, well, clearly the ground use is less than the original building. If you look at the.
It, it looks like. And I, I'm, I'm waiting for that, those calculations to appear.
Yeah. But clearly, the addition that occupies less square footage ground area was than the, than the original building. If you look at it, it means here it ran.
With that, with that, so that front patio would not be calculated in to the addition, the 80s addition, because that's just a raised patio.
And the Bank of America was there at the time. We didn't change that. That's been there for 30 years too. And then some.
Wow. Yeah. Okay. So, so, so what we're saying then is that this space without the shed, oh, I'm sorry, this space with the shed, no, the space without the shed.
Without the shed.
Needs to be larger than this space by at least 320 square feet. Because then this space is added and it becomes 100 in the 100. Okay.
And I think you've got it from what.
Yeah, I think it's there, especially when you edit the, the officer and stuff that doesn't show there.
Well, but that's square footage and not footprint. So we are just talking about footprint. Right. And that, in this case, that helps us, because the second floor doesn't count that.
But they were surprised of the second floor, which was neat. Yeah, the frame shop and all that stuff, but I think it was a surprise. Anyway, that's all water over there. We're, we're happy you're doing your storage area.
So we're going to make a nice looking building on the front, so you can look at.
Yeah, right, but I'm really worried about that drainage. And that's something Conservation Commission should be addressing. And I, I don't know what happened up there, but it comes from the woods, way up and back at that second story of your parking lot.
With the new subject that we put in?
Yes, yes.
Skill test?
Yes. So it's, I just, a store drain would take care of that. A store drain just before the gas station would, but that's all state property.
But that's not my land.
Exactly. But the, but the problem, see, no, no business or residence should put drainage onto the street. Correct, Mr. Chairman?
Are you going to deal with drainage?
Any, any new development should not be draining into the public way.
That's the Planning Board.
Right, well, but we can't point fingers here. I'm just worried that it gets fixed, because it's already caused accidents.
So we, that was, you made that comment in the, so in the public area portion, we saw, we closed the public area, we had, had this answer discussion based on the, the condition that we were talking about, so.
It just unfortunately comes from the back of that building, but it should have been solved decades ago.
So, having said that, your, the accessories website states two separate square footage for footage as, oh, but it might just be the footprint. Yeah, for the older building, delineated as a one-story building here, and the first building listed at 4,865 square feet. Then the second, oh, he's sending something else. The second building is a two-story building at 4,400 square feet. So if we take.
It's footage.
It's square footage.
So half of that basically is the footprint.
Right.
So if we, if we subtract those, then there is more. He's sending something else too. I don't think this is going to give us what we need. Right, and then the total finished square footage of the combined building is higher than that, that, it's called, they're calling it 10,412 square feet, and I think that's taking into account the extra levels and the space in the back. So what it looks like is that, I think that's confirming, although I can do it better in a letter another day, that this space is larger than this space and by more than that 320 square feet.
So why don't you still send that letter in to get both to close it, but that'll ensure you guys have the proposed decision to accept the variance on that condition.
Great, we'll do that.
All right. So all in favor of the motion to accept the, grant the variance in substantial conformity with the plans, with the condition that we receive the confirmation of the floor plan condition of.
Area.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nope, say aye on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize for texting during the meeting. So first time I've ever done that. I almost turned to you, gave you my phone now, just to do the same thing. Can I please have a second of that motion?
Thank you. You gonna do that in the spring, you think, or?
No, we're gonna do it.
This fall?
In January.
That's later.
Yeah.
While we are.
Well, it's gonna be quick.
We'll do as much as we can do.
It's gonna be in January. We go see the Board of Selectmen on Thursday.
What are you doing with your Kate next door? You're at one point.
We're still gonna do that. That will be in spring.
That will be.
See you then.
How long is it, the place can be closed?
Three weeks, max.
Three, three weeks?
Yeah.
David is turning over.
What are we gonna do?
Well, I gotta ask Jay, when we did the original one, we joked about putting all the petitions on roller skates, but you kept changing everything.
Oh, I'm not changing. It's not the case here.
We, we had all the walls up the first time, and then we ended up moving them. The second time, we moved them. After the third time, we didn't nail them down, we just left them loose so we can keep moving.
I'm not doing that anywhere I'm cured. Do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is this your tripod?
Oh.
Yeah.
You would have lost your keys, and I would have lost my keys. I would say.
So, all right, and we have this minutes?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't send them till today, so you may not have gotten an opportunity to look.
So does this, did you revise that one?
I did, yes.
Which one was that?
With that extra word, it was the first one, 1016. I apologize.
Nothing's changed from the others? Because I have them all at work Friday. Well done there, Erica. So nothing else on the forecast for?
Not for CBA. Playing board is very busy, but CBA finally has calmed down.
Because this is historically, at the time Dickie said, a ghost domain.
In case I don't end up seeing you, I will be going on a journey with you starting in April, so.
You can't do that.
Yeah, start babies. It doesn't have to lie out in case you don't meet. Thank you.
The sales, huh?
It is, yeah, yep.
Wow.
It's a girl.
Oh, you know her already?
Oh, yeah.
Well, being a planning board member, or that judge of planning board, she took care of going. She'll make all of us, whatever you have to do to get things ready for the baby.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think that's it.
That's it, did this? Motion to close? Or adjourn that?
A motion that we close the meeting.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right.